I call the May 3 Common Council meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM and I have taken off my mask because I do have sneeze guards around. I've also been vaccinated for more than two weeks, just for you, Sue Jess. So with that, I'd like to have the pledge of allegiance, Councilman Galloway.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call by Clerk Treasurer Parthoon.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilwoman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Vincent.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenezny.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Galloway.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Approval of minutes, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Petitions and comments of citizens, I do have one here in person and welcome to everybody. It's nice to be getting back to normal in-person meetings. Sierra Sue Jess, if you would please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your topic are masks.
Okay, my name is Sierra Sue Jess and I live on Jefferson Avenue. I'm here about the mask. Just last week, the county with the cities agreeing to extend the mask mandate for another month. We were told originally when we got the shots that we could do away with these masks. And you keep extending and extending and extending. Also, the scientists have said our masks don't do any good. Our cloth masks are useless. They say not even an M95 mask will stop the virus. So why do we keep pushing this down people's throats, making them feel like we can't think for ourselves and telling us what we can and cannot do when what you're telling us to do doesn't work anyway? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And I would like to say currently we're at 33% vaccinated. FEMA and the state of Indiana are back this week at the Maple Lane or West Side Mall across the malls. And they will be here Tuesday through Saturday from 9:00 AM till 6:00 PM presenting the Pfizer vaccination for either those that are receiving their second dose. Or if you forgot and want to get your first dose, you can walk up, drive up, supply your name and date of birth. And no identification is required to make it as easy as possible. We'll also be talking about eventually here, working with Leap and coordinating with Health Link to provide shots onsite at some of our industrial manufacturers to make it again as easy as possible to reach that 80% herd immunity that's been asked by the county health department. So we're excited about that. Any other comments from the public? Anything online?
Nothing online.
Standing committee reports, Councilman Frankie.
Thank you, Mayor. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee met March 22. They discussed doing more outreach via social media and had a pretty cool idea, which is working with the high school ASL, American Sign Language group to add translators to some public meetings when it's available. I thought that was a great idea. May is ALS Awareness Month and the committee is putting together a statement on that. And I will share that with you hopefully at the next council meeting, should they have it done by then. The Redevelopment Commission met April 28. A resolution to transfer funds to pay for essential services was made from TIFOR Infrastructure to the professional services account for $550,000. Payment to reimburse the real king for the parking lot was approved. An escrow release was approved for $5,000 from Anytime Fitness being held at Meridian Title. And Sarah Nimitz with the city of LaPorte has identified 53 dying trees in Newport Landing. Most of the trees that were planted a few years ago have died. And she's working with the nursery that NIPSCO uses and is able to get a really good rate on 46 new trees that will be of a larger caliber and are also more diverse, so should support each other well. And so the Redevelopment Commission approved a $20,469 authorization for that. But most importantly, the RDC agreed to fund the demolition of the Don George Ford Building. So I'm sure the city's happy to have Jeff Bachelor off their back. But we should be seeing that done soon. And the school corporation board meeting will meet on the 6th in three days at 6:00 PM at the Education Service Center. And the police merit commission meets on the 11th at 2:00 PM at the police station.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on April 21. Approval was given for the signing of a memorandum of understanding between the Northern Indiana Mountain Bike Association and the Park Department. This creates a working relationship between the two for the preservation and enhancement of mountain biking experiences within the city of LaPorte's parks. A decision was made to renew the agreement with the DNR to operate the boat launch for another four-year period. Board members approved the docking of the DNR patrol boat at Unity Park for the upcoming summer season. The Park Department will be looking into and hopefully implementing a pilot program for kayak rentals on Stone Lake. The program will run from Memorial Day through the end of July and rentals will be available during the hours of operation at the Stone Lake Beach House. Discussion took place regarding drainage issues on the 16th hole at Beechwood Golf Course. Permission was given to dig out a drainage pond to help alleviate some of the flooding. IDM does not need to give approval and no permit is needed if the spoils from the dig are respread at the site. A subcommittee called Safe Park Roadways was formed and met last Tuesday. The goal of the committee is to implement ways to make our parks safer for both pedestrian and bike traffic. And that was it for Park Board. And Traffic Commission will be meeting tomorrow, May 4, 6:00 PM at the police station.
Councilwoman Ficus, if I could add, on Traffic Commission, you know, we have our officers that when they pull people over on one road, everybody comes out and discusses every other road that they're not pulling people over because the speeding is so bad. And I want to tell the public, you know, when this administration took over, we had 31 police officers leaving left and right. We committed financially to our police department. We are up to 45 officers. There's an eight-month process of training, FTO, field training, working with other people. I mean, we are doing and getting to where we need to be, but it's not the law enforcement's fault for people speeding. We are a law enforcement community, we support our police, but people stop speeding. I mean, it can't be all on the police department. Wherever you are, we've got schools, we've got other areas. Stop speeding till something happens. And so we're doing our best, but best, but people have to be held accountable, slow down.
Well, and Chief Breton is on Traffic Commission with us. And they do have officers out, you know, patrolling as much as they can on, you know, Indiana Ave, Pine Lake Ave. They've been on Weller Ave. If anybody brings a complaint to Traffic Commission, he will send an officer out there. And they'll do the, you know, speed checks, so.
We don't have to put up cameras where we're sending bills home from speeders on Pine Lake and getting everybody. But, you know, they are doing the work. And that doesn't include all the other works, the work that they're doing. And if anybody would like a calls for service report from the police department, you can call there and they will send you. And it's amazing the things that they deal with.
Yep, absolutely.
Mayor, may I just mention something too off of that? In my ward also, there were some complaints of speeding and Chief Breton was called and he sent officers out there and they're, you know, aware of that. So that's good to know, that they're taking those calls and they're going out and they're following up.
Absolutely. Councilman Vincent.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've got a report this evening that I'm going to read that was prepared by Councilwoman Kenezny. As she's not here this evening, she's asked one of us to kind of step up and help provide those summaries. So the first is for our Airport Authority. Our next meeting will be on May 12 at 5:15 via Zoom. Next, the Tree Commission. The Tree Commission had a remarkably successful event this past Saturday in celebration of Arbor Day, which was April 30. The Tree Commission performed their annual tree giveaway. All trees found new homes and a fan favorite were the rosebuds. In conjunction with the ongoing efforts to rebuild LaPorte, Darla Aldred and Steve Schaefer of the Tree Commission joined Jeremy Ruff and his high school students at Ben Reese Park two Saturdays ago. This amazing group of people focused on deferred maintenance and spring cleanup in and around our park areas. The Tree Commission members were able to provide some education to the students pertaining to pruning and general tree maintenance. Mayor Dermody and our First Lady also put on their galoshes and orc gloves and helped in this event. Thank you for all of your time and service to our community. The next meeting of the Tree Commission will be held on May 20 at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. And lastly, Historic Preservation Commission. The Historic Preservation Commission last met on April 27. The Commission is awaiting the final draft of the Indiana Landmarks Design and Guidelines for Review and Execution. The Historic Preservation Commission is actively seeking applications for property owners interested in being added to the historic designation list. Those interested, please contact Tom Casey, City Planner, for further instructions and information. And the Historic Preservation Commission will meet next on May 18 at 5:30 here in the council chambers. End of report.
Councilman Galloway.
The Mayor's Veterans Committee should be meeting next Monday, the 10th, 5 o'clock at the Park Department. That's all I got.
And you're excited about the Fourth of July parade? Do you have any trailers in it?
No, I think we're going to have at least two trailers from the VFW, another pickup or two we're going to decorate up.
Awesome.
That's great.
That's cool.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Okay, at the bid board meeting in April, two damaged planters were reported in the downtown and they're currently in the process of being repaired. Flowers are scheduled to be planted in all the planters about mid to late May, of course, weather permitting. And the Business Improvement District Board will meet this month on Monday, May 10 at 5:00 PM at City Hall. And the Urban Enterprise Association Board will be meeting this month, Wednesday, May 19 at 4:00 PM.
Councilwoman West.
The Fire Merritt Commission is currently administering their promotional list for the next two years. Their next meeting will be Wednesday, May 5. And the Plant Commission met before council this evening, this meeting, and provided a favorable recommendation to approve the annexation of Rota Farms on Boyd Boulevard.
Thank you. City Planner Tom Casey, tax abatement, compliance forms. And my question to Attorney Otis, is this something that can be approved altogether as one? Or do you have to go individually?
You have to individually.
Mr. Casey, is the finding recommendation going to be the same for all of them?
Yeah, there's a motion attached to each, in your packet, to each individual one that we reviewed and.
But they're all supportive and considering.
I think statutorily it'd be best to do them individually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Casey.
Roll through a review of each one individually.
Yeah, maybe if you want to just address them all upfront and then we can just take each motion separately. But I think that, I think for the record to be clear, because this does go downstate, that it.
Okay.
Sure, so what you have in front of you are the annual tax and real property and personal property tax abatements for several different companies within the city of LaPorte to take advantage of this incentive. Individually, I've contacted each company as the CF ones came in and talked to them about the impact of the pandemic and what it's done to their business over the last year and where they're going from here. So it's a pretty general review of the application and their status. I will just go through each company. I would ask that you keep in mind, because of the pandemic, it's affected companies, different companies, different. Some companies have actually gone beyond what their expectations are. I know others have struggled a little bit, laid people off. But in every instance, in every case here, they are all coming back, they're all experiencing significant growth. And their biggest challenge to meeting that significant growth has been the hiring of people here trying to get, and that's from all different ranges, from technical jobs to a simple production line job or forklift driver, so.
And all you have to do is show up every day and you could, there's a job in LaPorte for you.
That's correct. So the first one, Montisol. And if you look at the packet on the summary, I put estimated employment along with the actual employment. The estimated employment is what they're saying they're going to do based on getting this incentive. Very clear in the case of Montisol, actual employment exceeded that, far exceeded the number that they are trying to hit. And then estimated salaries again was roughly 10 times higher. And then obviously, the personal property investment was almost $14 million. So they're doing very well and have plans for future expansion. I know the land that they bought just east of their building, they're looking at creating a transload facility there. So that's at work right now. Wind Machine, small private company here in LaPorte, they basically stayed the same on the employment. The estimated investment was originally 600, but actual was 206. And also keep in mind, these, like for instance, theirs was signed in 2015. These are either five or 10-year, most of them are 10-year agreements. So they do have time to try to reach these goals. It's not like they've got to hit them, you need to expect them to do it. Jager Unitec doubled the amount of employees that they expected, so they've done very well during this period. And estimated salaries far beyond on the real property. Estimated investment was originally 420,000, but they exceeded that at a million and one. B&amp;B Manufacturing, this one's a little different. I spoke with Kyle Galloway. They have laid off a lot of people and that has affected their business. You'll see some difference in the salary. Their actual permanent employees stayed the same, was slightly higher than what they originally estimated. But on the additional employees, that's dropped far, far behind. But they're one of the companies that clearly said, we're on a rebound, we need more employees. We're currently in the process of doing that. So again, but that was mentioned, that that's a little bit of a challenge for them. Hommet Castings, very large company here, obviously had some significant layoffs with estimated employment at 312, actual at 66. And salaries substantially lower. Real property investment was way up, they expected 27 million, they're at 64. Sorry, real property at 64 million. And then almost 80 million investment in personal property. So they're investing significant amount of dollars into that plant. It's just a matter of rehiring once things come back for them. So again, the aerospace industry, that took quite a hit, but I'm expecting to be coming back soon. American Licorice did very well, actual employment almost four times higher than what's expected, salaries as well. And then personal property investment was slightly lower, estimated was 9 million eight. And the actual investment was 7 million eight. But again, a company who's weathered the storm and several downturns and always done very well. And then lastly, our newest company taking advantage of this incentive, which is the Newport, LaPorte, Newport Medical Office Building, which is a holiday property located right in Newport Landing. This is a partial year, so that's why it looks a little different, actual employment zero. So that's what's estimated on the growth. They have employees there, obviously, they just didn't add any. So they're just getting started and getting set up. And then the real property was exactly what they said it would be. So in all cases, from the Director of Planning and Development, all of these companies are meeting their objectives, especially in light of the pandemic year. And I expect them to do, show nothing but increase that the following year.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. So if you have questions, we'll go through them, each company, and then you can ask before approved. There are some that have both real and personal and then others that have either real or personal. So we'll start with Montisol and they have both a real and a personal. We need to have a motion for each one individually. So Montisol, do I have a motion for their real property?
As pertains to Montisol, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Do I have a motion for personal property on Montisol?
Since I did that, I'll go ahead and.
Wait, hold on. Montisol does not use the tax abatement deduction on personal property. We have to do that on real property though, or not?
Does it say real and personal? Mr. Cook.
Good evening, Mayor.
State your name, please.
Bert Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. When the, the companies that claim the investment deduction on personal property, you don't have to cover that. That's done through the Urban Enterprise. So Montisol would just have their real property, I believe.
Just the real, okay. And all three companies that have personal?
Correct.
It's all covered through?
The Urban Enterprise Association, yep.
Thank you.
There we go, so one motion on each one.
Well, that completes Montisol.
Correct, yep.
So B&amp;B Manufacturing, I have a motion.
I have a, I have a question. The employment numbers, is that based on additional jobs or total jobs?
Mr. Casey, if you could come to the mic, please.
Mr. Frankie, the ones reported in the summary report are additional jobs. So it's reflecting what they stated, they would assume they're enjoying additional employment through the expansion. And that's the actual number.
And you said most are 10-years, which ones are not?
I believe that they are all paid.
Okay. Thanks.
Further questions? Okay, so just to clarify, Mr. Cook, all of these or Mr. Otis are only real property?
No, you have, so you've got Montisol, which is real. And then you have Wind Machine, which is personal, but that is a tax abatement.
Yes.
Jager Unitec has real property.
Yes.
The personal property is the investment deduction, so you do not need to cover that. B&amp;B is real and personal.
What you just said, we don't have to do both.
The only time you don't have to do personal property is if they are claiming the investment deduction as opposed to a tax abatement.
So B&amp;B will be real and personal.
Correct.
Arconic or Hommet now?
Is both real and personal. Licorice is personal.
So Ms. Parthoon was actually correct, I believe.
There's two of them that do not have, that are claiming the investment.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion for B&amp;B Manufacturing? And we'll go individually on a real and individual on a personal. Councilwoman Ficus.
I was just going to. Your Honor, as pertains to B&amp;B Manufacturing, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Ms. Ficus?
Okay.
Councilwoman Ficus, for B&amp;B Manufacturing?
For B&amp;B, okay, no.
Personal?
Okay, as pertains to, Your Honor, as pertains to B&amp;B Manufacturing, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Councilwoman Cutler, Arconic?
As it pertains to Arconic, Hommet Casting Services, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. That was for the real. Do we have a motion for Arconic for the personal property?
Your Honor, as pertains to Arconic, Hommet Casting Services, I move.
I need a motion?
Oh.
So move?
Yeah, so move.
That's what she's doing.
That's what she's doing.
That's what I was doing. I thought I was doing that.
That she was reading, okay.
As it pertains to Arconic, Hommet Casting Services, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. American Licorice, personal, do I have a motion?
Your Honor, as pertains to American Licorice, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Wind Machine, personal, do I have a motion?
As pertains to Wind Machine, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Jager Unitec, real property.
As pertains to Jager Unitec Sealing Solutions, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. LaPorte Newport Medical Office Building. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, as it pertains to LaPorte Newport Medical Office Building, I move to certify the taxpayer's current compliance statement of benefits on the following grounds, the taxpayer has substantially complied with the statement of benefits.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. So we went through the tax abatement compliance forms. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on any of these companies that have hung in there, fought, done what they can to stay open during a global pandemic? We certainly appreciate their efforts and are excited to have the opportunity to employ more Laportians and residents from our community. And the option is there, pardon me?
New Laportians.
New Laportians even. And have that opportunity, you can call us tomorrow, we might have you to work by 2:00 that afternoon. So jobs, jobs and jobs. All right, Councilwoman Ficus, repeal and place ordinance 10-2021.
Councilwoman Ficus, you just have to read this by title only.
Okay. So, Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the second and final time by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, annexing to and bringing within the city limits of LaPorte, Indiana, and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in Pleasant Township contiguous herewith.
So I do have a motion and a second discussion. Attorney Otis?
Mayor, just to clarify, got a little out of order previously, the council had approved this for a second time, but it was prior to the fiscal plan and the resolution of the fiscal plan and the public hearing. This cannot be legally approved until after you've had those. So if this is approved tonight, the next step will be to publish this in the newspaper. We hope to have that in the paper this week. We hope to have that in the paper this week. And then thirty days after it's published, it will become officially annexed into the city.
But tonight, we can still pass this?
Correct, yeah, it, it needs to be passed tonight, yep.
Will Mr. Barr have to come back then for another meeting?
No, there's not any more public meetings.
Because we could put a name on his seat out there and let him enjoy it during the summer months. All right, so I do have a motion, do I have a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I guess that we already have one discussion. Could we ask Mr. Nelson to come speak on behalf of Mr. Barr?
Sure, Mr. Nelson will be happy to do that. Additionally, before Mr. Nelson starts, the Plan Commission reviewed this tonight during a special meeting and found that the zoning of M1 Light Industrial complies with the comprehensive zoning plan of the City of Laporte. So that's been established as well. And just sometimes people have questions about zoning when we annex. We are not rezoning, we are establishing zoning, and that's why some people have questions. Does this go through the Plan Commission or Board of Zoning Appeals? This is unique because zoning was never previously established since it wasn't in the city. So with that, Mr. Nelson, I'll turn that over to you.
I promised you all in the first meeting that I would show up in person, and here I am. Took me to the final stage. I am Bill Nelson from Braji Nelson James in Michigan City, pleased to represent the petitioner, Rhoda Farmers LLC. As you all know, there's always people behind corporate entities, and those two people are Harold and Sue Barr that are here tonight, and they're, they're happy to be here as well. As Nick said, tonight at five o'clock, the Plan Commission granted its blessing, found in favor of this and made a favorable recommendation to this council to proceed with adoption. This is the last step, the last step, I guess, from a formal standpoint of having meetings like this and you having to make decisions and take action. If you're so inclined tonight to adopt this, we would encourage you to do so. There are some, a couple steps. There is, there are detailed technical steps, and that is simply the publication. And for some reason, our legislator decided that you have to wait thirty days for the, after the publication, before the ordinance is effective. So even if you act tonight, it's really not annexed in yet, it's pending, but pending just the passage of time. And that's just a matter of the sun coming up and going down a few more times, and we get to that point. And at that point, the, the property is in the city, the bars can start acting in that direction, the city can start acting in that direction because it's city property. So it's an exciting time. I mean, I, I, Mayor, you're right, there's a lot of jobs available. I hear about it. If you can pass a drug test, you can show up, there's jobs. What a great opportunity that this parcel will be, though, to attract more businesses. We were, I was talking to the bars before, before the meeting. One of the worst things is when companies don't want to come here. Well, what's worse is when they want to come and there's not a place for them to show up. This is going to put 215 acres of place where companies can show up, and they can open up new businesses, attract new jobs, and if we want to have thirty by 2030, this is a step towards that, it really is. I applaud all of you, the mayor, Bert Cook, the efforts you make. You're fortunate to have folks like the bars who are interested in this. I hope more people will heed your cry and want to be a part of, of this process. It is great for our community, not just folks in the city, but those that live around and adjacent to the city. So this is a great opportunity, I was thrilled to be a part of it. When I got the call from, from Mr. Cook about this project, I was excited to be a part of it, thrilled to meet the bars, great people, the great partners for the city. So I would urge you to adopt this tonight. That's the, again, the last step. You won't have to see me anymore till the next project, and there'll always be another one. I'm always happy to work with you guys.
Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Questions? Thoughts? Further discussion? And remember, this has been a friendly annexation, more of a partnership. We're not looking to forcibly annex anybody. This has been, again, a great partnership. We need land in the city, and we're excited about this. And, and our focus is undeveloped land. We don't want to take in the city due to the circuit breaker, we don't want to take already developed property. So this matches up exactly where we want to be, and we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, bars, and Sherry Bannock there, we're excited and appreciate your patience through this process. Councilwoman West?
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman West?
Resolution to transfer funds within the 2021 budget, whereas there are additional monies needed in certain line items in the 2021 budgets in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year 2021. Seated, city planner, from 361 repairs and maintenance to 111 salaries, for a total of $760.20. End of resolution.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Councilwoman Cutler?
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler?
A joint resolution of the City of Laporte Common Council, City of Laporte Board of Public Works and Safety, City of Laporte Redevelopment Commission, Laporte County Council, Laporte County Commissioners, and Laporte County Redevelopment Commission to create a Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee. Whereas there is a need to identify alternatives to heavy downtown traffic of the City of Laporte, increase pedestrian and vehicular safety, and promote economic growth in the greater Laporte area. And when, whereas there is a need to formalize and create a Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee, now therefore be it resolved as follows. Name: That the Subcommittee shall be known as Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Committee. Purpose: The role of the Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee shall be to provide advice, knowledge, and direction in an effort to identify alternatives to heavy downtown truck traffic in the City of Laporte Central Business District, increase pedestrian and vehicular safety, and promote economic growth and development opportunities in the greater Laporte area. Membership: That the Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee shall consist of no more than nine members as follows. One member appointed by the Laporte County Council. One member appointed by the Laporte County Commissioners. One member appointed by the Laporte County Redevelopment Commission. One member appointed by the City of Laporte Common Council. One member appointed by the City of Laporte Board of Works and Public Safety. One member appointed by the City of Laporte Redevelopment Commission. One additional county staff person appointed by the Laporte County Commissioners. One additional city staff person appointed by the mayor. Members shall have an interest in and knowledge of geographic areas within the city and/or county of Laporte. Members shall serve at will without specific terms. Members shall not be compensated for their services. Officers: The Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee shall have a chairperson, a vice chairperson, a secretary, and no other officers. Officers shall be elected from amongst the members of the monthly meeting by majority vote. Members shall not be limited in the number of terms which they may hold in individual office. Meetings: The Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee shall establish a regular time and place of meeting and shall hold regular meetings. Special meetings of the Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee may be called by the chairperson or by quorum of the Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee. Rules of procedure: The Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee's meetings shall be subject to the Indiana's Open Door Law and shall be conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. Term: The existence of the Laporte County North-South Corridor Funding Advisory Subcommittee shall be annual or until it is dissolved by motion of the membership. The resolution shall become effective on the date of passage. End of resolution.
So I do need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. To clarify, this does not mean in any way you are supportive, you're committing to a corridor. This just means the county and cities, they look for funding, and we deserve a voice. And I think that's, I know we listen to a lot of people outside the city limits talk about, you know, their concerns about a corridor. We also have, have to make sure and understand that our city residents deserve a voice because they're dealing with the truck traffic that barrels down Indiana Avenue, Lincoln Way, and our community deserves to have a voice to make sure we're a part of that. So discussion regarding this resolution.
I think it's very positive based on the city and the county working together. I think this is really a positive committee idea.
I agree. And I love the fact that, yeah, we're going to look at alternatives and just to try to make it work for everyone. I think it's great.
So I do have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes six zero. Now with that, if I could add, the city council, the common council, has one member appointed on this. Is there a motion to approve a common council member at this time?
I would like to, oh, I would like to nominate Tim Frankie.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Frankie, are you interested in walking the plank?
You betcha. Love some good excitement.
Further discussion? Anybody from the public would like to support or have issue with Mr. Frankie?
Regarding this.
Regarding this.
Speak up now.
Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Congratulations, Mr. Frankie.
Thank you.
And I do believe the county council appointed Mike Rosenbaum.
Oh, very nice.
Or maybe it was the redevelopment commission at the county. One of them appointed Mr. Rosenbaum.
Awesome.
Okay.
Well, that's it. Other business, a couple of points that I would like to remind everybody again, vaccination opportunities this week, Tuesday through Saturday, nine to six at the mall, drive up, you can walk up. Also, if you're looking for work, message me on Facebook, message any of you, private message, we can help you try to find employment. All you have to do is pass a drug test, show up two days or more than two days in a row. We have jobs everywhere. It's an opportunity. It is an opportunity here to grow our community and provide a, a good living for members or new members of our community. One other issue, I don't know if the council's interested in eventually taking up, but I've heard some complaints and had issues of how many vape or smoke shops we have on our main thoroughfare. So whether it's Pine Lake, whether it's Lincoln Way, the amount of vape and smoke shops that cross those paths, and is that something that are better served on other areas of our business community? And is there willingness or interest in discussion, discussing the process of addressing how many of these are on Lincoln Way or on Pine Lake? And what type of message does that send considering the unhealthy community that we currently are? Thoughts? We have our city planner here, where we have our LEAP development member that would also be involved in this process if the council was interested in...
And the FDA just passed.
FDA, I think, just passed.
Oh, I, I don't know the answer to what they specifically...
Lack of vape, but is that something the council would like to discuss further in the future?
I was gonna say, I think it's definitely worth a discussion.
Yep.
Anyone else like to comment on that?
I mean, I think it could be a little complicated, like if a number, if there's a limit, and that limit is below the current number, you know, who goes?
Well, I think you'd have to grandfather in the current businesses. No one's looking to remove the businesses. But what I've heard from people are, you know, how many do we need in Laporte? And it could be grandfathered in, and then if that business closes or moves on?
Well, I, if I could, I think...
This is why it's open, please.
I think you face some challenges. I mean, do we need more dollar stores? More dollar stores continue to open. Do we need more bars? More bars open? I mean, people have specific opinions about those things. You might have difficulty in terms of someone wanting to open a shop and wanting to be on a thoroughfare because you have access to greater advertising because you're on a main drag. I, I'm not quite sure how you go about that. I mean, I'm open to discussing it, but you will be confronted with, you know, well, just how many dollar stores do we need? Does anyone know how many we have in Laporte at this point? I mean, demographics have been done, I'm sure, in reports, and same with fast food. Do we need more fast food based on a community of 22,000? So I'm not sure. I'm not sure how you can regulate that. There, that's all I...
Well, no, and I appreciate that.
That's why we need to have a discussion. I mean, pros, cons, good, bad.
I think the council has to decide, I mean, these are, I'm just telling you, the phone calls, the things I've seen, is that the message?
Right.
You know, we have quite a few. And I agree, and I think our focus has not been on fast food and focused on more restaurants, and that's why I think you see the docks, Smokehouse across from...
Culvers.
Culvers, you know, coming in, and more sit-down in Newport Landing, but, but when the calls come and people are interested in looking at alternatives other than vape, smoke stores or smoke shops, considering the healthy or unhealthy community that we are, I think we're third from the bottom in the state of Indiana. But thoughts? Mr. Galloway, Councilman Galloway, you look like you're ready to say something.
Yeah, well, your gas stations too sell, you know, just not vape, smoke shops.
So you're saying we do have quite a few already?
Yeah.
That we don't need more?
I don't know.
Well, yeah, why do we need just more shops of just vapes? I mean, you, you can go to the gas station and get that product, right? And I would, I think that's just taking up space for stores to come in, and, and that's what we want to see, more businesses, small businesses come in down our thoroughway.
I would also wonder, too, how many of these vape shops opening are owner-occupied buildings or are they rentals? You also get confronted with, you know, people with empty buildings wanting to rent locations, and are those the only people seeking to rent? I mean, sometimes you have a downtown area that you want to be high retail traffic, and then offices move in, multiple law offices across from the courthouse when you may prefer having more restaurant retail. I mean, again, you're going to be confronted with some challenges in terms of regulating who rents to who. I mean, you, if a business owner or building owner needs to rent to a business, you may be confronted with some challenges.
I know you, you said you, but I assume you meant we.
We, yes, we, of course.
Because this is a council decision, you know, the council if they decide you want to pursue that, just sharing concerns of some business communities, some downtown concerns, and if you didn't see that there's a new winery and bistro that'll be coming, the old sporting goods right across from the county.
Another reason we need to get trucks off Lincoln Way.
And personally, I don't, I don't really agree with the city pursuing that. You know, I believe in free enterprise and supply and demand, and I, I think that if the demand is there, so be it. I don't think it's the best look for the city, for sure, but I think Councilwoman Cutler makes some great points, and, you know, from a city's perspective, through LEAP and, and other entities, absolutely, we can decide who we target, and we shouldn't be targeting those, but I don't, personally, I, I wouldn't be for anything along the lines of limiting what goes there.
Well, again, that's where we put it out, and what happens when we have ten of them or fifteen of them? Do we let the market? Because new ones are popping up on the main thoroughfare. And sometimes it's too late. We do, we do make you, we, but this one's up. Do make ordinances, we do make rules on what can go, where can go, whether it's Newport Landing, whether it's other areas. You already do make decisions on who can go there. And not to bring Mr. Casey or Mr. Cook into this, is that fair that we do already require certain ordinances that require certain things out of businesses? Because I'm a free market guy as well, but I get it, so.
Absolutely, and I think Tom will probably touch on maybe a little bit more of the zoning component of things. But, you know, so, so we're all on the same page. We talk about, and I think this is to Tim's point, those proactive efforts that we make to attract business to our community. We put a great deal of time and effort into being very strategic about what we're looking for and how we interact with companies who might fill those needs. And we'll continue to do that based on the, you know, the desires of our leadership, the community as a whole, the council, the redevelopment commission, the mayor. I think probably more so what's relevant in our discussion tonight is those reactive, how we react to companies who are looking to locate, maybe not on property that's owned by the city, and how that interplays with our zoning ordinance and whether or not you want to try and tighten some of that up. I mean, it is not, without a doubt, it is not uncommon to see regulations like this in other communities that are guiding how their corridors, specifically those corridors where most of your people are coming into the community, you know, how those look. Because I do think it says something to, to individuals both in the community and people that are new to our community about what we're about when your corridors are filled with certain types of uses. I mean, frankly, and I hope this isn't taken the wrong way, you know, I've always looked at, we have a lot of fast food on our main thoroughfares. I think that makes a statement about, you know, what Laporte values. And so as we look into the future, I think you do have to put thought to where we are today versus where we might want to be in the, in the future, so.
I agree.
Mr. Casey, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'll add one quick thing. On when it comes to vape shops or paraphernalia shops, that's not defined in your ordinance. So the ordinance, the zoning ordinance that we have, while it was updated in sixteen or seventeen, a lot of things weren't addressed. And one is the definition of vape shop, smoke shop. It wasn't around back then. So basically, all it refers to is tobacco sales. Tobacco sales.
Bless you.
Tobacco sales are permitted. What you could do is define it further. So if it's tobacco sales, if it's a cigar store, however you want to define that, that's really where you would start, is including a separate definition for a vape store or store that sells paraphernalia, that type of thing.
Tom, did you confirm that Valparaiso has something like this? Was that it, or was it Monster? I forget. Not to put you on the spot, but I know...
I can't remember.
One of those growing communities.
Yeah, they, they actually, you have to have, it's a special exception in any case, whether it's B2 or your downtown zoning. It's a special exception so that it's got to go in front of the, it's got to be a variance. They have to pay money to get it. They have to make an effort. They have to let the neighbors know, hey, we're opening a vape shop on Lincoln Way, and we're, you know, everybody within that adjacent property needs to approve it. So it's a process that you have to go through. It takes a month. It's, it's, it takes some effort. So they, I think that would be the easiest route, is to say that it's got to, you know, in case of a vape shop, it's got to be a special exception in these certain zones. And it can't be located next to a school or whatever other requirements you might want to have. But unfortunately, because the ordinance is a little dated, vape shops weren't even around then. So there's no definition of any of that.
And again, just to remind the public, because our social media can twist. We're having conversation, we're having debate. That's what we were all, we were all elected to do. And that's why this is important discussion. Nobody's saying for, nobody's saying against. It's saying, hey, should we have this discussion? And the public should want their elected officials to have discussion in front of them, whether in person, on social media, the good, the bad, and ideas. And then they can engage if they like one way or the other, or if this is important to them. So I'll also leave, because we are asking those questions of why or why not. As I was excited, I'll leave you with this one, that yesterday morning, when I read the newspaper and saw that the Chicago Bears were potentially looking to leave Chicago and come to Arlington Heights. And I messaged Mr. Casey and Mr. Cook to say, why not? Laporte, Indiana would be a wonderful place. And I didn't get much response out of that, that the Laporte fairs could have a great name here and in our community. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We are adjourned, thank you.